I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City of San Juan Commission. It is a work session for today, April the first, 2015. And I actually do have a pastor present and I'm going to put you on the spot. Pastor Sanchez, would you be able to lead us in an invocation? Thank you. You can come forward. We may all rise for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, it is with a deep sense of need of you and your guidance for our leaders and our community servants, I pray that you will give them wisdom and that this meeting will be led by your will. Righteous, bless the city. The city flourishes. Thank you for this opportunity. In Jesus' name, amen.
We can face the flag.
My question is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You all may be seated. To take this opportunity first to welcome Commissioner Eddie Cantu, who is present here with us. Welcome Commissioner. And if you can have an opportunity to introduce the people who are with you from your office, if you have anybody else with you. Also is our Drainage District leader here, Mr. Sessin. You can come forward. Present also, we have Mr. Vela, who is our financial advisor, and the rest of our staff, and of course, our engineer, Ronnie Cruz. The purpose of our meeting today is to continue a discussion that has been ongoing. And I had requested this take place so that we could have an open discussion with the public, with the rest of the commission and our county commissioner regarding some projects which he proposes and some projects that are also pending for the City of San Juan based on needs of our community and have an opportunity to also discuss the financial possibilities of any of these projects being realized and if which ones to set priorities as a commission. And so with that ongoing also, a way of background for those of you who may not be aware, there is, on some of the roads that we are talking, there is an existing agreement with the county of Hidalgo that took place back in October of last year, in which there was a commitment of $1.3 million for the roads of Cesar Chavez, a portion, a portion of Moore Road, Sioux Road, Eldora, and Nolana. So far, from the last... was completed, as was the Moore Road. And the one's pending as far as the design and final, to put out, were Eldora, Sioux Road, and Nolana. And I suspect that tonight we'll have an update where we are with that. Part of the project that has been approved already and funded by the City of San Juan. And then we'll go into some of the presentation by our commissioner and presentations by our staff, and then of course, the, our financial advisor as to what the City of San Juan is able to undertake this afternoon. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and move into item A, which is the presentation and update on street improvement projects by Mr. Ronnie Cruz. Mr. Cruz.
Mayor, Commissioner, I was asked to update the study that we did on the street, the priority list. So what I did is what you have in front of you, the new one that I passed out, what I did, I eliminated the streets that were done last time. If you look at this map over here, everything in, whatever, Magenta's, has been, has been, yeah, has been paved. Those are the streets that have been paved throughout the city. Green are the ones that are already won, are the worst, the worst of the worst streets. And the blue, this one, this piece here and this little piece there is what the county has done. But that day, that took it out so far.
My question is that these are the ones that have been identified for you as priority one.
Yes.
But there's others that are not highlighted here that are also listed in your, in your recommendation. Is that correct?
You know, from the last time we met, I think it was in November 2013, on the same thing, obviously you've seen some streets. But most of the priority ones are on the green, all of these green, this area right here, this piece here, this piece here. And that's what included, the, 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 and the list that we have, we broke it down. And what we've been doing in the city streets is mixing it, breaking everything up, mixing it, putting 1% lime, bring it to the, to the subgrade, and put it right back down and pay it with an inch and a half of hot mix. And the streets have been holding up pretty good. City streets will hold up like that with under city traffic. And that's what we do inside the subdivisions. Now, some of these, the priority ones, if you look at this area here, right there, those streets don't have curb and gutters. Those are, those are total reconstruction, because they, if you put curb and gutter, you lower the street, it goes all the way down, including drainage to fix it. Because the other ones, remember, we're just paving, we're not doing anything with drainage other than to preserve it. And then of course, in the very end of the, of the layout, you'll see the attachments. Those are the same ones every last time, Cesar Chavez, Eldora, and North Road, two sections, Sioux Road, two sections, South Nebraska Road, drainage option one and two. Those two are the new ones that we, we looked at for the police station. Option one and option two, and I have two maps there that, that, they're, they're over here to, to look at that now. The chief also asked me to look at certain areas of drainage. But this left here is the master's drainage front line. And I know you asked about...
Las Flores?
Well, this is going to take, this is going to be, because now it's changed, because the police station now is, you're proposing it where the tower is.
Correct.
So by doing that, it's going to change where, at first, it was taking care of the flood. Now, we've got to take care of another, you know, six acre, 10 acre, whatever's going to be developed in that area. So the project has changed. And that's what option one and option two are, to take, either do it like that, there's probably one more option. And, you know, those are almost a million if we do both to project.
What page are you on?
The attachments are in the back. Attachment, option number two and option number one. Those are all in the attachments. You look for it. Those two options are what we have on this area that I live here, Door Drive, put them out both. But I'm not sure that's, if that's part of the, of this one. I think you didn't talk about police station and another item, but, so, anyway, that, that's where we're at, is drainage. He asked about curb and drainage, which is here. This is, this is the line I was telling you about reversing the drain from Benetton Street.
Yes.
See this, we've already done the canal crossing, and we left, right here, we left the step out heading east with the 48-inch to be able to expand Sergeant Trevino all the way to Cesar Chavez. And to drain it and take care of what's happening in Benetton Street. Because that's over there, there's no drainage, is that correct? Reverse it back into, and get it into the ditch out of that system. So that's what this is right here.
And that's the estimation of that is in here.
On the master plan, and master, on the master drainage plan, I don't have that. That would come up, it would have to be done, I guess you could do the drainage first.
Right.
Right now, we're doing water source for that area. That's the area that the city has bought out, the CCN from North Alamo. So it's going to, it's a next, probably a next area to develop. A lot of schools might be gone, and that road's going to need to be looked at, and both drainage is only an issue with everything in the city. So that is, that is a large project. I don't have that cost estimate here. We only have the drainage portion in the master drainage plan of Sergeant Trevino. So, so this is what we had in the master, so we've done whatever's proposed. We didn't think... Being off the list, the last time we had it, the first ones on the old one you have, I just took them off the list, took off the costs, and it was, I looked at it, it was a million dollars. And I think you all spent 850,000 or something like that to pay all this area here. Here, Bear Trail, and this section right here.
As far as the, the ones that we, we are looking at, and the ones that we're going to have a discussion, are not part of the, the total, they're separate projects in themselves, which would be like the Eldora and the...
They're attached.
Did you look at San Antonio?
Yes, that's here also. San Antonio's here, one of these, right here. San Antonio is, 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 is a district.
Okay. And from, from, you gave us estimates from what road to what road?
To Moore Road. San Antonio is from, I think it's from 12 to Moore Road.
What page are you on, Ronnie?
Well, here's page four. From Ridge to Moore, San Antonio. San Antonio needs curb and gutter on one side in, in most of that area, up to, up past that vacant land in the sub, that first subdivision. Then that's the reason you have total reconstruction, because you would have to redo it all. But it includes curb and gutter, drainage on San Antonio.
So the 650,000 is curb and gutter and drainage? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Why is it right here under the street type? Why is it under B? It shows no curb and gutter.
Because it has no curb and gutter.
On one side and then, okay.
You would have to add, and bring, widen up and add the curb and gutter to the east side.
Yeah, that's right.
And what would be the drainage outfall for that?
Actually, there's already there, Commissioner. This is, right here, there's already a 54-inch on Ridge, from the school, heading north into the ditch, Bear Trail is, there's already a 54-inch line there. So there is drainage.
What about south of Ridge?
You have a 36-inch here, on, no, it's proposed. This is more proposed, this 36-inch, right there, to take care of the south side.
And that was, okay. So the flow is north?
Yeah.
What I'd like for you to also do, and we're not, we can, the, we had an update at the last meeting regarding where the project is that the, the county is appropriating monies for the overlay. Can you tell us where we are in reference to those, so that we know those monies, that 1.3 million?
Those are the, for the three roads, maybe Raoul might have a more update.
It was four roads, but we're, we've done two, so we have three left over.
I know they were, they were going out for bids by the end of April.
If you can just update us on those, please. Can you get that microphone next to you, Mr. Sessin? I would appreciate it.
Mayor, before we start, and excuse me, Mr. Sessin, we also have Mr. Danegadis from Techstat here. And if it's all right, and if he could join us over here, because in a minute, I think we'll be asking you some questions as well.
I'd like to ask the members, members, personas en la audiencia que si tienen, necesitan explicación en español, que no, no hayan entendido lo de inglés. Hay personas aquí que necesitan esa asistencia. Una persona. Okay, Ms. Sessin, I have only one person that raised their hand. Would you be able to do me a favor and sit next to them? Levante su mano de nuevo, por favor. Ella le va a asistir con preguntas. Usted también si gusta ponerse cerca de Ms. Sessin, para que les pueda contestar si tienen preguntas en particular o les puede asistir en entender. Miss Ramire, si gusta mover su silla para atrás, para que también escuche. Okay. Gracias.
Well, Raoul probably has more updates on dates than I would have on those two projects.
Yes, Ronnie, thank you. Mayor and city council, our Sioux Road project is, plans are complete, signed and sealed and ready to go, so, come again?
As of Friday?
As of Friday, yes. We just finished them this past Friday.
Wonderful.
And they are ready to move forward, so we're going to get with the precinct to coordinate the advertisement for the project itself. Based on our latest estimate, we feel that we're still within the budget that we originally proposed, and we're hoping that we get good aggressive bids on it, to get that whole stretch, basically from my road east to the east side of the school.
Up to Redama, is that correct? Or up to the part that the city did?
Yes, up to the part the city did, which is the east side of the school, basically there.
I got you.
There's some minor, minor drainage that we're doing there, just tapping into a line that you already have in place. Put in some inlets, some roadside grading, and as I presented to yourself and the, and the city council, this is just an interim solution, improvement, to, to provide better traveling surface for that area, but it's not a long-term solution. We definitely don't have any major drainage improvements, we just have some minor roadside ditches that we're putting in, a couple inlets to tap into what you already have in there. It's definitely going to be a better riding road, and it should, the investment should take you, you know, maybe three years or so, five, God willing, depends on the traffic that you're going to have there. But, but again, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, we're upfront, let you know that it's just, just an interim solution that we, we are proposing here for now. And back then, I say we, because I was with the county at the time when this commitment was made.
Before you go on on that one?
Yes.
So we talked about the plans being complete, go out for the bids. Give me a little summation as to when do you believe the bidding, the bids will come in, opening, and then actual work beginning on the road? If you can give me some timeframes.
Sure. And I'm just going to go off the top of my head on this, Mayor, but we, if we are able to advertise in two weeks, commiserate court and request authorization, advertise and pick up packets, that'll be another two weeks after that, to afford opportunity for everyone to pick up plans. Then we'll have a pre-construction, so on the fourth week is when we'll probably open bids, excuse me, a pre-bid, not pre-construction, pre-bid. Fourth week usually we'll open bids, so that's a month there. And then the time it takes for the contractor, or for myself to review the bids and recommend to the court, probably another week. And then once the, the contractor is selected, that could take anywhere from two to four weeks, depending on the bond process that they have to go through and get bonding in place. So you're looking at about a couple of months in between after the court authorizes the, the actual approval to go out for bids, so.
So maybe mid-June, end of June?
We anticipate, yeah, having, if everything goes well, we should be ready to, to issue, have a pre-construction conference, issue notice to proceed if everything's fallen into place.
Okay, and that's Sioux Road. Yes, sir?
On, on the other projects, we, we updated the precinct on our estimate of time. Nolanas, we figured we would have plans ready April 30th, and then probably 60 days after that, be able to do some work. But I know the precinct may be looking at other options in that area. I don't want to speak for the precinct. I know they maybe do some in-house work, I'm not sure exactly. But if we were to go put it out to bid and do the work, we're looking at probably two months after that, again, to get it out, get it ready.
Two months after the April 30th?
Yes, ma'am, to get it ready for issue of pre, pre-construction conference and notice to proceed.
Beginning of August is what we're...
And June 5th is our estimated date, date on Eldora Road, to produce plans, and then two months after that, we would say we would have it on the street. And again, we have been working on these projects. We had some projects that were already in the works, and we were balancing both of them. And I say we, the staff that I had, still have at the county, as you know, had transitioned from the county to the Drainage District.
That's correct.
So we're, we're balancing both at the same time right now, and it's, it's been a hectic run at it, but we're maintaining the workload and trying to produce these plans as efficiently as possible. We know that this is an important project for both the precinct and the city as well, so.
Very good. And just to clarify, we, we look at two of them that you've, that you just mentioned, Nolana and Eldora, more or less letting out in August. You can actually go at both of them at the same time. They're, they're not working, they can be moving independently, correct?
We're, we're moving on them, and again, the precinct will look at the, the options for, for how we're going to approach the, the construction on those, but if we were to put it out to bid, that's the anticipated dates. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that, Mr. Sessin, on, on the update on those particular roads.
If I can, if I can add to that with respect to those, those roads, Mayor.
Go ahead.
The proposals, when they were proposed by Mr. Sessin, there was several options, there was options A, B, and C. The, the city and the county decided to move forward on C, in expectation of, of future projects that would come in and, and I guess, take care of these road projects for a longer period of time. If those road projects do not go forward, then from the county's perspective, we'd probably come back and look at option A, which would be something similar to what I, I'm sure that Mr. Cruz designs in some of these projects, which is a, a little more than an overlay. Project, option C, if you remember, is an overlay. There's, it doesn't treat the, it doesn't treat the subsurface, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a long-term plan. And for the county to come in and spend whatever the balance is, I think it's probably 800,000 or 900,000, it wouldn't be a good investment for an overlay. Because those prob, if you, I mean, you've driven those roads, and those roads, I mean, they need actually reconstruction, or what we're proposing in terms of five-lane expansion. If the five-lane expansions aren't approved, then we'll come back and we'll say, you know what, let's consider option A, and then look at the price difference, and, and that would be something the city would have to consider. Just so that you're clear on Eldora and Sioux.
When you say we have to consider, in other words, you wouldn't put the money that's already committed?
The million, the million dollars, we're committed to that.
Right.
Right. Oh, absolutely. What I'm saying is that the difference between, I, and I don't, I don't know the, the numbers by memory, but...
I don't have that. Does anybody have a copy of that?
And I apologize, I didn't bring one, however, there, it was a substantial difference, Mayor.
Right.
You could probably see them in here.
When we went in to look at the reconstruction, there was a substantial difference, and that's why, I recall, the council and, and the precinct decided to go with that option, to say, well, we'll overlay for now. It's an interim solution, but the reconstruction would definitely be...
In one of your attachments, I, I just noticed that Mr. Cruz had proposed, or had come up with estimates on Eldora, there were around $3 million. What, what we're looking at in option C is around 400,000, so there's about a $2.6 million difference. So I guess that would be a pretty good, pretty good number, or whatever's in there.
Okay, I'm looking at, this is on, you were talking about Eldora or Idea?
I'm sorry?
What were you talking about, Commissioner?
Eldora and Sioux Road.
Okay. For the purposes of references, I'm looking at what seems to be the, the proposals from the county back in October, September 19, 2014, to be exact. And I'm looking at option A, and this is on, up to Idea School.
So that's Sioux Road.
From I Road to Raoul Longoria, west section, and then the Raoul Longoria to east section, to the Idea School. The first, from I Road to Raoul Longoria, it's 402,710 dollars with 40 cents.
That's option C?
That's option, that's the first option.
A.
It's, I believe, it's the very first one, so I would assume that it's A.
Okay.
And the one from Raoul Longoria to Idea School is for 455,128 dollars and 88 cents. That's from Raoul to Idea School. That's Sioux Road. Option...
About 900 total, or?
About 900, 900,000. And then the one that we approved was for 185,310, up from Raoul to Idea School, and then from Raoul to I Road is 202,398 dollars. So approximately 100 and...
About 415,000.
385,000. 385,000. On Eldora, it shows option A, for, from I Road to Raoul Longoria is 458,273 dollars and 87 cents on option A. And from Raoul Longoria to Ses Canal East Section, 434,157 dollars and 16 cents. That's option A. And that's what you were making reference to.
And, and what was option C on, on Eldora?
On Eldora, it was for the, the first section from I Road to Raoul, 199,321 dollars and 74 cents. And from Raoul Longoria to the canal, it's 100, 213 dollars, 513, 213,532 dollars with 26 cents.
Again, and, and another difference that we didn't identify in the initial estimates, and now that we've gotten some field data, there's some drainage improvements that would have to be done in the first phase that would probably increase that cost in the estimate, because the first one was just a straight overlay that we were considering, so.
On which one, Mr. Sessin?
On the first option, A.
On both roads or one street or?
Both roads, yes. We would have to look at that to do a little more improvements for roads, because if we're going to invest money, I would recommend, if the investment's going to go that route, then we would, I would recommend that we invest a little more money in drainage to be able to, to give the life that it needs on that road, so.
Okay, sir. I'm going to go ahead and move into item B, the presentation update on the road improvement projects in conjunction with Hidalgo County Precinct Two. And this is the same roads we're talking about, but this is the proposal that Commissioner Cantu is bringing to the city. Commissioner?
Are you talking about the priority projects?
I'm now down to where you're going to, to speak about your part.
The stuff that we discussed last night?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, are you going to put it on the, I thought we had, do we have the...
Powerpoint or anything?
Are we able to turn on that monitor so the people on that side, Mr.?
Yes.
Okay. Is it on? Okay. I guess some of this will be for the public. You know, the county's responsibility is obviously county roads. And then in some, there's some exceptions to the rule in that we can come in, the county can come in on major thoroughfares in certain situations. In this case, all East Eldora, Sioux Road, and Ses Chavez have all been approved to be projects that the county can work on with the city. So our responsibility, if we're going to be working with a MPO, which is where most of the money sits, the mayor's a member of the MPO, the county's responsibility is to increase capacity to existing streets, which means if a certain street has two lanes to go to four to five lanes, that'll qualify our project for MPO funding. Of course, there's other, other things that it needs to meet. You also want to, the purpose of going from two to five lanes is obviously to improve traffic. The longevity of the streets will last a lot longer. It's also to develop safe and pedestrian-friendly streets. What that means is you're going to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. In, of these three projects, one of them clearly makes an economic development impact, which would be Ses Chavez. But the main focus is to be able to leverage county money, MPO money, and city money to work on a partnership, to work together to do more streets bigger and better and improve the mobility throughout the county. Priority projects that we're working on, three of five precinct 2 projects are in the city of San Juan. They are East Eldora. The benefits to San Juan is from I Road to Ses Chavez. But the East Eldora project is a project that will start at 281 and go all the way to Alamo Road. Sioux Road is strictly a city of San Juan project and that's, that limit is I Road to Ses Chavez. And then the Ses Chavez project is from Business 83 all the way to Nolana. So that's a city of San Juan, city of Alamo project. This is a map that shows the, these three priority projects, how they affect the city of San Juan, where they're located in the city of San Juan. Beginning with East Eldora, once again, the limits are from 281 to Alamo Road. It's a 3.8 mile project. Segment one, because of the size of the project, it was broken up into segments. Segment one would be US 281 to Raoul Longoria. Segment two being from Raoul Longoria to Alamo Road. The project length in the city of San Juan is 2.1 miles. This project has five PSJ schools that use it, you know, on a daily basis. And what we're doing there is going, or what we're proposing is to go from two lanes to five lanes. Obviously, they will have curb and gutter, drainage, proper drainage, and sidewalks throughout. The drainage and pretty much, and because of the way that the roads are going to be constructed to Texas DOT standards, they're going to have a way longer life expectancy than some of the other projects we're doing, even if you do full reconstruction because of drainage. Drainage, getting water off the streets is the most important part of making roads last longer. And so, you know, anyone can tell you that when you have curb and gutter and proper drainage, you know, the road's going to last a lot longer. The next slide talks about costs. We currently have already 20.6 million dollars of category seven money designated from this project, for this project from the MPO. 9.2 million on segment one and 11.4 million on segment two. That's money that's ready for these projects, for construction. That's all coming from the MPO. And the only thing that has not been identified is the right-of-way cost at 3.2 million. But we will work on, if these projects are approved, we will work with the MPO to get that 100% funded. Total project cost is 32.6 million dollars. Hidalgo County Precinct 2 is going to contribute 4.63 million. And we're requesting from the city of San Juan a contribution of 2.35 million. Should I ask for questions or wait to the end?
Unless, anybody can ask questions if they want to, but I think we've heard it.
Show some pictures of Eldora Road, but I mean, nobody knows these streets better than you all. We're proposing here at the intersection of Raoul Longoria and Eldora, a signalized intersection, which will help with the traffic there. Next project is Sioux Road. Project limits are all within the city of San Juan, from I Road to Ses Chavez. Two point, the project is 2.1 miles in length. It has one school, which is the Idea Academy High School. And it's currently two lanes and we're proposing to go four lanes with large sidewalks throughout. Because of the, there's so many homes that are abut this road, it was impossible for us to go to five lanes. But to get funding from the MPO, we can go to four lanes and that's probably the best route to go on this project, just because if we go to five lanes, we're going to be impacting a lot of actual homes. So that's why this one's a little different than Eldora. The next slide is the costs. We currently have 10.6 million dollars of category seven money designated for this project from the MPO. Construction funding is 9.4. We don't have right-of-way right now, but just like in Eldora Road, we'll be going back to the MPO once these projects start moving forward to ask for that money. Total project cost is 16.4 million dollars. Hidalgo County would be contributing 3.53 million and requesting the, from the city of San Juan, a contribution of 2.35 million dollars. This is a picture of the street in front of Idea Academy. And we're proposing a signalized, signalized intersection there at Raoul Longoria also for this road. Final project is Ses Chavez Road from Business 83 to Nolana. It's 2.8, 2.8 miles in length. 100% of the project is in the city of San Juan. This project will also be an increase of from two lanes to five lanes. Obviously, we don't have to worry about the area right in front of Walmart, because that's already been expanded to five lanes. But this project will go from Business 83, where Lupa and the other organizations are located, all the way north to Nolana. Anybody's seen the traffic there by the flea market understands the need for this project. This is a great project for economic development opportunities, mostly for San Juan, because you have the northwest side that's, that can be expanded, can be used for economic development opportunities, and also the southwest side. This project currently has 12.6 million dollars in trends funds. And what trends funds are, they basically allow you to begin working on the project. They allow you to submit an EA, an environmental, to the state to work on these projects. 12.6 has been identified. If this project moves forward, we'll obviously look in other parts, we'll look at the MPO for additional funding or to make it actually category seven funds. With prop money coming down, the MPO, you know, Andrew Cannon has done a real good job of shifting monies around and trying to open up opportunities for new projects that are shovel-ready. Total project cost is 21.8 million. Hidalgo County will contribute 3.53 million. And the city of San Juan, we're asking the city of San Juan to contribute 1 million dollars. This is a picture of Ses Chavez in front of the flea market. Proposing a signalized intersection at 495, is that what that is? It's there? The last slide, you know, at this point, for the city of San Juan, we've already identified 31, we've already received from the, from the MPO, 31 million dollars available for construction. We also have 12.6 available through programming money. You know, we're asking, we're, you know, I've been in office for two months now and what we're doing is we're working on projects where we team up and partner with cities on any kind of project where we can, where it's easier for the city, for the county to secure funding. In this case, these roads. You're talking about seven point, seven miles of roadway for the city of San Juan at less than 815,000, 815,000 per mile. A normal road of five lanes, just the road itself without right-of-way, because we have a lot of right-of-way costs, especially on Sioux and Eldora. A normal five-lane road costs about 4.5 million a mile. But when you consider right-of-way and everything, you know, engineering costs, you know, usually a mile costs about 6 million a mile. You know, working on these roads will obviously, the county, the county's limited in what they can do within a city. It has to be roads that touch county roads. We're very, you know, the county's very interested in helping San Juan, because we understand the need, we understand the fact that roads are, you know, the major concern here in the city of San Juan, both from the, I know from the commissioner's side, from the mayor, from you, Mayor, and from the people that live here. They're desperately in need of roads. Nobody's had, I mean, we haven't had this kind of rain in a long time and it's really set everybody back and the cities, you know, just, there's no way for a city to keep up. So what we're trying to do is, and it's hard for us, the county, to keep up with puddles and such. But what we're trying to do is make every dollar, you know, expanded as much as possible. Everything that we're trying to do is getting funding from everywhere we can, in this case, the MPO. We don't have this money available to us. We have to, as a county, go out for COs and CIB loans to the state. But we need to do everything possible to do it now. The roads are calling for it, the people are calling for it. The fact of the matter, the longer we wait, the worse condition the roads get and also they're more expensive to build later on. That pretty much concludes the presentation. Any questions?
Are there any questions for the Commissioner?
Yes, I have one. Commissioner Cantu, what would be the lifespan on, you know, this type of road project?
I'll let the...
How long, sir?
About 20 years.
20 years?
Any other questions?
Your area...
I'm area engineer here for Texas DOT.
Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to go on to the financial. This is a C presentation by First Southwest Financial Advisor of the city of San Juan to discuss the options, procedures, and methods of obtaining the city's required contribution for Hidalgo County Precinct 2 proposed roadways with the city of San Juan. And I guess also the other projects that we've spoken about as well. Mr. Vella? Okay.
Ms. Vella, you'll have to tell her, since it's a PDF, it's not a PowerPoint. Mayor, members of the City Commission, town commissioners, please allow. My name is Chris Vella for Southwest Company. And we're financial, we're financial advisors to the city of San Juan. We have been asked to perform a couple of tasks in preparation for tonight. The first task is the financial issuance process. And we have prepared a presentation to go over this very briefly, to acquaint everyone here as to what the options are available to come up with necessary monies to do improvements, you know, to the community as designated by the city commission of the city of San Juan. What is a municipal bond? A municipal bond is a government debt obligation to repay bond owner principal and interest due at maturity, much like a mortgage in your, at your home. You pledge to do certain things and make payments at a certain time. What are bonds issued for? For schools, for roads and bridges, municipal utilities? What are the most common types of bonds? General obligation bonds, certificates of obligations, tax notes, and revenue bonds. Some of you on the city commission may remember that we have issued revenue bonds in a number of series to do a number of water and sewer improvements to the community that have resulted in a partnership as well with the Texas Water Development Board that has resulted in significant grant money that has been forwarded to the city of San Juan that makes your net revenues go forward. And you will see how all of that ties in. A lot of these securities are sold on what we call a fixed rate. In other words, not variable rate debt that's subject to some index so that you know what your payment is today, tomorrow, and all the way to maturity. The last thing that we want for a community is to wake up one day and say, oh, guess what? We need to refinance, we have a bullet looking at us and we have a huge principal balance, or our payment went up and we now have to raise whatever revenues to make that payment or transfer revenues from another source. We don't do that. So the other thing that we need to remember is that most bonds are sold on a 20-year basis. Sometimes they're sold on a 30-year basis, but most of the times it's on a 20-year basis and they have what they call a 10-year call. On, if you compare it to your mortgage, it may be a prepayment penalty that's associated with it if you call them early. Let's talk a little bit about general obligation bonds and some of the things that are associated. First of all, they're secured by the full faith and credit and ad valorem taxing power of the community. What does that mean? Well, that means the net taxable value of the city is defined by the Hidalgo County Appraisal District, on which you set your tax rate every year and you do your budget. The payment is secured by the government's power to assess, levy, and collect taxes. Whatever that tax rate is, it is assessed on a yearly basis at a time adopted by the, by the city commission. And the tax bills are levied in conjunction with a partnership with Hidalgo County. And the tax bill goes out to the people and the payments are made. And the money is then transferred over to the, to the city to operate the city on a, on a daily basis. Typically requires a bond election for authorization. General obligation bonds typically require that. Let me point you to recent examples of that. The Drainage District was one where we authorized 100 and some odd million dollars, about 184 million dollars worth of bonds. South Texas Community College, McAllen ISD is currently, you know, conducting a bond election in the vicinity of 200 and some odd million dollars. Lower cost of funds due to the tax pledge. The tax pledge is very important. You all will recall that the last time we did a, a water project, which was for the transfer line for the raw water that was proposed for the raw water reservoir, we attached a tax pledge to your revenue bond. That was to get the lower cost and to make your net revenue... That was to get the lower cost and to make your net revenues go further. And of course, the tax rate to pay the debt service is not subject to a rollback. That's not in your, in your calculation that is done on the MNO side, where if you get a certain effective tax rate that you have to roll back, or subject to the rollback, that's not the case on debt service, because that assures the purchasers of the debt that the payments will be there. Now, there's another instrument that's very similar, that is very highly used in the state of Texas, in that certificate of obligation. And of course, the major distinction between a general obligation bond and a certificate of obligation is that they don't require voter authorization. However, they do have other little niches that must be met. For example, if a petition of five percent of the eligible voters can force an election. Notice of intent to issue is required. It is published in the local paper on the same day for two consecutive weeks. First notice would be published at least thirty days prior to the sale. And when secured by solely an ad valorem tax issued for limited purposes such as land acquisition, judgment funding, or purchase of heavy equipment. We've done some where there's some judgments for certain lawsuits in certain political subdivisions. This is what they, this is what they use, or how we use them. Now, when you attach a revenue, a combination tax and revenue pledge, it's a different, a, a, a different type of security. They're just as lawful as your general obligation bonds that we described above. They sell at interest rates similar to general obligation bonds, and the tax rate to pay the debt service is not subject to rollback, just like the general obligation.
In this case, you would have two revenue streams?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
You could, but not necessarily. The revenue stream is usually a, a limited pledge just to achieve this, this designation that we talked about here. But yes, ma'am, it, in, in some cases where it is necessary to have and make the payment, you could have a revenue pledge as well to make the payment, but...
And the revenue would come from, what is fed into the general, general...
A lot of times it comes from enterprise funds.
You can use enterprise funds?
Enterprise funds, yes. But of course, you need to remember what you use those enterprise funds for.
Correctly, so in other words, if, if road projects, we could not use enterprise funds?
I would not recommend that you do that, that's typically a general obligation for the general public.
But in some cases, particularly when that road project is to improve economic development, that is something that has, is likely to be used?
We have seen, Commissioner, Mayor Protam, in some cases where we do, in the past, have done economic development corporation transfers in interlocal agreements between the city and the, and the interlocal, to where certain streets are funded and with a revenue stream from your economic sales tax component, or that one half penny that you receive. That would be a good example, yes. There's another instrument called a tax note. And a tax note carries the same, it's, it's an authorization and adoption by the city council, city commission, and we use those terms synonymously. City councils is the, is you, is a term that's used to portray, when you adopt the Home Rule Amendment and the city council manager form of government. In some cases here in South Texas, we adopted the commission form of government that's a spinoff of some of the areas in the Galveston area as a result of the hurricanes that hit at the turn of the century in the nineteen hundreds. But nevertheless, city commission, city council are, are used synonymously and usually designated in your charter. However, they have a maximum maturity of seven years. These are for short types of projects, but carry the same general obligation pledge that a CEO would have, or a certificate of obligation would have, or a general obligation would have. Pledge of anticipated annual taxes or revenues, proceeds from bond proceeds previously authorized but not yet issued, current revenue services, sources, issued to finance the following: construction of public works projects, purchase of materials, supplies, equipment, machinery, buildings, and land, pay contractual obligations incurred for professional services, pay for operating or current expenses, fund cash flow shortfalls, and sell at interest rates similar to GOs, obviously at a, at a shorter maturity, and would be less in terms of interest based on the yield curve, and of course, not subject to the, to the rollback under effective tax rec calculation. Revenue bonds, we're all familiar with revenue bonds, because that's the type of debt that we have issued here very, very substantially for the improvement of the water and sewer system. But don't forget, Mayor and City Commission, that we also issued COs for this building here, the library, a few years back. And we had a very successful sale with the sale of that, and we also did a little refunding where we also saved the city some money and lowered the payment on the new money as well. So, revenue bonds are typically for water and sewer projects, not necessarily exclusively, but in the city of San Juan, normally that's what we have been using them for. Issued for revenue-producing operating systems, like I said, enterprise funds, water, sewer, sanitation, gas tax, sales tax, special taxes, special assessments, special revenues, tax increments. It's another thing that's upcoming, those tax increment reinvestment zones where we, we use that, and we also combine it with some sort of a tax pledge sometime to enhance the credit, depending on how strong or how weak that credit may be. Secured solely by the pledged revenues of the operating system. Now, going back to the system that we use with the, with the transfer line, we did pledge the net revenues of the water and sewer system because it was a water project, but we borrowed the tax pledge from the city to enhance it and to keep the rates low. Require minimum coverage usually on the net revenues of, net revenues to average annual, maximum annual debt service of one and a quarter or higher. Must meet promises, covenants in bond resolution, things that we must have, like we must have, we covenant that we will have rates sufficient to make operation and maintenance expenses, rates to make debt service, et cetera. Promise to make the revenue, the revenue or asset at a level sufficient to pay bonds and maintain operations, rate covenants, limit, or additional bonds test. When we do the additional bonds test, that basically limits us to qualifying all the existing debt, plus the additional debt, and still meet the coverage factor of one and a quarter. And of course, we must maintain a reserve fund that we've asked to get the balances on, on those numbers. If there's any money left over on those reserve funds, they can be deposited into the Interest and Sinking Fund for the repayment of debt, and then you can hold off on, on, on contributions from the revenue account, and that money becomes available for other cities.
And all that is skewed by, or affected by, the leverage ratio that we currently have, and how much, the more that we would be encumbering, we, we do have a limit, and then the amount of cost would be based on how much we're leveraged as well in determining how much we would be dedicating to that, would that be a true statement?
Two, two things, Mayor, when we, when we look at a revenue credit, we normally look at the net revenues and retain earnings. And, and where you are on your, on your rates as well. So, in the city of San Juan, as you well know, we've been able to leverage a lot of your net revenues. We've had substantial, not substantial, but significant growth in the, in the net revenues where we have been able to maintain, and we still have some cushion there. If you remember, when we first started, we had a limit, I think, of about twelve to thirteen million, and we've kind of gone beyond that and, and been able to accomplish a lot of projects, and we still have some, some room to, to do other projects on the water and sewer side, that are desperately needed, I might add. The difference is our ad valorem tax-supported debt carries a lower interest cost, like I said. Revenue bonds are not backed by the full faith and credit of the issuer. Revenue bonds are only supported by the revenue stream from the enterprise fund. Bondholders are dependent upon revenues from specific enterprise or the project to repay, cannot make issuer raise taxes to repay the debt. Revenue bonds generally require a reserve fund, ad valorem tax-supported bonds do not. Revenue bonds covenants are more extensive, rate covenants, fund balances, additional bonds, debts, tests, debt service coverage. Some of the professionals that are involved in these transactions, your financial advisor, a person like myself, a bond counsel, like Mr. Ramirez, underwriters who purchase your debt, underwriters' counsel who represent the underwriters on negotiated transactions, disclosure councils when applicable, paying agent, escrow agents, also when applicable, rate on refundings, when we do refundings, we normally have that, rating agencies, sometimes we do ratings, sometimes we don't, so, again, when applicable, bond insurance companies, credit enhancement companies when applicable, trustee in certain transactions also when applicable. Compensation for bond participants is typically paid from the proceeds of the bond issue and occurs only upon the successful completion of the transaction, with the exception of bond ratings, those we do have to pay, whether we complete or not. The financial advisor does all of the above, advise the issuer, issue is representative in the bond market, evaluates the cost effectiveness, assures the issuer is well informed, provides ongoing financial advisory services apart from bond sales, recommends the method of sales, coordinates the entire bond issuance process and all parties involved. And of course, the bond counsel and attorney retained by the issuer who gives a legal opinion that the issuer is authorized to issue the proposed securities, the issuer has met all legal requirements necessary for issuance and interest on the proposed securities. He provides legal opinions at closing, bonds and the underlying documents are valid, preliminary official statement or official statement accurately describes the bond documents, and prepares transcripts of bond proceedings, and defines, more importantly, the tax exempt status of the bonds. The underwriters is the team that, that purchases the, the bonds, assist in, expert responsible for pricing the bonds, fiduciary duty is to bond investors, very important to remember, not to you, to the purchasers of the bonds. If involved in a negotiation, assisting in the preparation of offering document, assisting in structuring of the bond issue, negotiates bond covenants for the benefit of the investors to enhance the credit and make it more attractive, complies with the regulatory mandates for the pricing and the sale of the municipal securities. Other parties, underwriters' counsel who represents the underwriter to make sure that he's in compliance and that there is no disclosure that has not been met. Disclosure counsel usually also when in more complicated transactions, paying agent, financial institution that tracks ownership of the bond and coordinates the process of bond payments, escrow agent, a financial institution that holds bond proceeds in escrow, the rating agents, organizations that evaluate the credit quality of debt instruments and assign credit bond ratings. Of course, the higher your rating, the lower your interest cost theoretically. And then credit enhancement companies, usually insurance companies, they give you a, a rating that they're rated at and takes your rating from that level to a higher level for a premium. A calculation is done to make sure that that premium offsets in the term of interest rate savings. And the trustee is a financial institution with trust powers which acts in a fiduciary capacity to facilitate the collection, escrow, and distribution of funds for the benefit of the bondholder in certain transactions only. This is your typical issuance process, I won't go through all of it, but you can have it there for reference. This is the ratings that Moody's, Fitch, and S&amp;P assign. You can see that Fitch and S&amp;P have similar or identical calculations, assignments, and you see where the city of San Juan stands on its general obligation side on an A credit. Importance of disclosure, we just went through that. March the thirty-first was the deadline for compliance with Securities Exchange Commission Rule fifteen C two dash twelve. Any issuer that does not comply with fulfilling that requirement gets into a non-compliance and becomes a disclosure item in the documents, and there's certain language that has to be disclosed, but an underwriter, if it is not done, is usually not willing to buy your papers, so it's very important that that be kept up. This is something that was completed with the assistance of the city manager and Mr. Leroy Gonzalez, and of course, your auditor. I have a copies here of those documents that were, that were filed, and, but all of that has been done, has a lot of your financial data that has been updated, we had been working with your, with your staff to get all of that accomplished.
And we are in, we are in compliance, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And what are the, the annual filing requirements? Those are the annual filing requirements, and those are the ones that are listed there. Now, getting to the financial side, you tell me when you all are ready to go there.
Do it.
You are?
Yes.
All right. Now, again, we have been asked to evaluate the impact on a general obligation bond, referring back to the presentation, in terms of a certificate of obligation, okay, that pledges your tax pledge, ad valorem, for, for two separate projects. One for a contribution to a program, for a street improvement program, to the tune of five million, seven hundred thousand dollars, and the other one for a proposed public safety building of eight million dollars.
Which is arbitrary, because we don't have that number.
That is correct, it's just something that we put out there so that you, you all can look at. Now, you can see the all-in interest cost of a four twenty-nine represents all of the costs associated with the issuance of the debt. That number is kind of like your mortgage that includes closing costs, as well as the actual cost of carrying your paper. So that's a true number. Assume rating, the S&amp;P A that we, we talked about, bond insurance, no enhancement, we went with no enhancement on this one. Your total debt service, your structure, a conservative rap, the term, twenty years, the final maturity in thirty-five, and your tax rate impact would be three point seventy-five cents for that amount of money. The annual impact on a home of a hundred thousand dollar value would be thirty-seven dollars and forty-six cents per year, and the monthly impact on a home would be three dollars and twelve cents. If you want to take it in quarters, you can go twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, and that would be the, the corresponding numbers there. And of course, the public safety has its own calculation there as well. It takes about a little less than five point three cents for a total combined tax rate increase of nine point one cents. And it's pretty much... The other sheets are, is a spreadsheet that takes your existing debt, plugs in the individual debt for the street program contribution, as well as the public safety contribution, component. Questions?
Yes. The, the projections that I'm going to talk about, not project-specific, but impacts on how we determine the amounts and the, the cost, per se, and to be able, able to carry this. We're looking at it in today's dollars, in today's situation with the city. And so, one of the things that, when I'm looking at the numbers that you prepared as we consider going on, whether we take on debt or not, if we look at today's, if we look at the past trends the city has had in reference to meeting its obligations on a, on a budget year. You know, we've had some setbacks in the past couple of years where we have not been able to meet our obligations on our budget, so we're having to go into our fund reserve, right? And, and I believe maybe the last one that we got audited said about six hundred and some thousand dollars. So when we look at taking that into consideration, and I know that you had mentioned a little bit earlier that you sat with our folks to take a look at those numbers. If we look at where we are right now, in March of this year, and looking at the projections for the end of the year, we're making an assumption that we're going to be online, we're not going, we're not going to be overspending, we're not going to be going into our reserve, because I know that for me, that is something that we have to also monitor, is the amount that we have. That being said, everything has to remain as we have budgeted with, unless there's an emergency that we don't anticipate that goes into our reserve fund, or our, our, our fund balance. What I want to know is if we look at the amount right now, I think you did tell us how much we have in our fund balance currently. Not audited, but actually by just looking at it right now. And what is that, Mr. Gonzalez? A million eight. And of the million eight, what is, you know, we, we've talked about it often enough in this, in our budget meetings and, and as we start approvals, our rule of thumb, we have it as policy actually, I think, the twenty-five percent of our operations of the city of the budget. What would that be for the city of San Juan, for this year's budget, the twenty-five percent?
I've, I've done some quick calcula, a, a good question, Mayor. I've done some calculations and, and from the un-audited numbers that, that, that we have been provided, you're at, your total expenditures for fourteen ran around ten million, two hundred and sixty-two, one ninety-nine, and your fund balance, ending fund balance was a million eight seventy-two, six oh six, or approximately eighteen point twenty-four percent.
Okay, and so, if we do, if we apply to that number, the twenty-five percent?
It's a, it's going to be a range, Mayor, in between fifteen and twenty-five percent somewhere. It's not going to be a static number, but the closer you get to the twenty-five percent, the stronger the credit becomes, no doubt.
And, and our, and also our, our, it affects our... And also, it affects how we look at, or looked at by the folks that are trying to lend us the money?
And to that effect, Mayor, we acted proactively on that aspect, and we met with the city manager and the chief accountant at the city, and we expressed what we considered to be some milestones that they needed to, and some guidance on how to proceed, and one of the things that we discussed was to monitor, you know, your year-to-date revenues, your year-to-date expenditures, and remember that you're at the halfway point of your budget year, and that by being at your halfway point of your budget year, it is now the time to make the necessary course adjustment, you know, to the ship to make sure that if you're going to run short, that you start making the adjustments today, and you have enough time during the year to achieve those revenues. And I think that the chief, he, we had a conversation, and one of the first questions that they're going to ask, you know, when you go through the rating process, is what do you project your fund balance to be? And I think that he indicated that he has taken certain measures to assure certain levels, and I think he quoted that he's striving to increase your fund balance by $400,000 at the end of this year.
Which would put us at about...
About...
Two million, two million, okay? And we've been stating that's about 2.2 million for the, if we meet the 25%?
We will be a little short, but remember, with the rating agencies, Mayor, it's all about a plan. It's all about management, and it's all about governance, okay? So if we can demonstrate to the rating agencies that we have a plan on how to maintain our fund balance, okay, how we're going to increase our revenues, and how we're going to pay for our debt, we should be fine.
Now, going along the lines of what we're speaking, if we're anticipating that, say, all things stay as they're projecting, the numbers have showed by the end of the year, when we consider a possible, let's average it out, between 200,000 to 400,000, let's say 300,000, all things go well, we have no emergencies, we have no reason to go and dip into our fund, and we are able to place it into the fund balance, to meet our obligation, and we were, let's say we go ahead and agree to meet an obligation, if we had that money at our disposal, 300,000, if we had that extra, would we be able, would it be something that we would work towards, in your opinion, to invest into the fund balance, or would we say that extra 300,000 that is now being generated, that we didn't see last year, could that be something that says, well, if we issued debt and we were able to pay 250,000 for the year, we don't have to raise taxes, because we have a new amount of money?
It's very easy for me to tell you from this side, you know, put it in your fund balance, because I don't have to face the voters, okay? Because I don't have to answer to them in so many words, but there's so many needs sometimes that would mitigate. So what I'm trying to say is, decisions are made depending on needs and how relevant those needs are, and that has to be balanced with a prudent fund balance policy. That's the best way I can answer that.
And our, okay, and so, to get you there, the policy that we have is to meet the 25% threshold, yes or no? Okay, so that's what we have here?
That is your informal policy.
Okay.
Not a written policy, but an informal policy.
Okay, that we've been using.
Yes.
All right. So if we were to look at, one, not upsetting the policy versus what we're needing to fund, and I'm trying to get to the point is, is there a way that if that extra income were realized, or that extra revenue stream were realized, that that could be what was pledged versus to meet the obligation, which is already within our budget, without having to impact the bottom line on the taxes?
I see where you're going with, okay, what the mayor is saying is the following, do we have an alternative to raising taxes to pay for this proposed improvement? And the answer is, of course. If you can find the monies in your budget that you can cut, okay? If you can do that without jeopardizing services at whatever level they're at, and of course, US policymakers would have to address those decisions, or those thresholds, if you will. If you can make that transfer, we would transfer, you would need less money in your general funds, of which you would do is you would lower your MNO tax rate, okay, and transfer it over to the debt service side, and so that you can make the payment. Or to make a long story short, three pennies back over, three plus pennies back over to the debt service side.
Which is what we're talking about when we're looking at some of this.
At the end of the day, that's exactly.
At the end of the day, okay.
We circle back to that original point, yes.
Exactly. So that's one option.
Correct.
The other options that you have is combination of revenue, combination of the ad valorem tax that we have.
Not necessarily, the, I'm not asking for a revenue stream from any enterprise fund.
Okay.
Just a revenue to achieve, to be able to do these projects under the CO Act, to be able to qualify them.
So if, then going back to, if, let's say that, let me entertain this idea, let's say that the amount is 300,000, we're talking a range that I heard from 200 and some to 400,000, let's say the midpoint is 300,000, and if we were able to realize the 300,000 a year, what does 300,000 fund? Two million, three million in a estimation?
I don't exactly have that calculation.
In your experience, just a, you know, a calculated guess.
Do you have a calculator?
Yes, here we go again.
About four million, I think.
I was going to say something, I will reframe.
Bringing back memories.
Mm-hmm. I'm going to run, Mayor, on my...
That's fine.
Okay?
I appreciate that.
And I'm going to run a million dollars.
Yes, sir.
At a 4.29% and come up, on a 20-year basis, and come up with an average annual payment, and then we're going to multiply it times...
By the years, by the amount.
Well, not necessarily by the years, by the number of millions that we need.
Yes.
At about $74,000 in debt service per million, okay, at 429.
A year.
A year. Now, that's a rough number, okay? Subject to verification, et cetera, et cetera, but...
On a million?
On a million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So if we take...
Take me to 300,000.
Four-point million, four-point zero.
All things, you know, staying the way that we've discussed them, no major issues, and carrying it year by year. We could actually issue debt for 4.1 without affecting the tax rate, keeping it at where we're at, keeping our expenses where we are, not an increase, per se.
That is, that would be one way of looking at it, or doing a contribution, I mean, doing the existing transfer, keeping your tax rate the same, and a minimal differential tax rate increase, and accomplish the whole project. That would be the other alternative.
Okay, to get to...
Correct.
Whatever amount we're looking at.
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's what I'm looking at, and so, I guess when, those are my questions, and they'll come back, I guess, when I look at the needs, and I think we as a commission all have opportunities to listen to our constituents from all over the city, and the needs which they have. First of all, I think that, you know, Commissioner Cantuay, appreciate that you're concentrating in San Juan, and I'm glad that you're here, because we're going to have an opportunity to discuss, I think, those projects that you have, plus the other needs in our community, and I know that's what we've talked about. What I'd like to be able to just share, and I know that it wasn't done in, for all of them, but one of the things that I'd like to, as we're discussing these items and the amounts, you know, top of the list, I think we've all talked about it before, Eldora-Sue Road in Ollana, definitely. I know that there's substantial requests from many of our residents on the south side when we look at San Antonio, and I think that Mr. Cruz made a representation about the road work from Ridge to Moore Road. I think one of the things that we have dealt with over the years is the drainage issue. One of the areas that I've, I know we've heard a lot of from over the years, and I would venture to say more than 15 years, possibly 20 years, is Las Flores. We have contracted recently, Commissioner, to hire an architect for the design of a police station. The location of that police station is on Ridge Road east of Raúl Longoria, and one of the things that we are realizing and that we're having to look at is, we're trying to move on that project, however, by, if we're able to realize that project, whatever we're going to do there is going to impact the drainage in Las Flores, which is one immediately west of that. And so, those folks, and when we look at during the last rains that we got back in the fall, we have at least one street where that water is practically at the doorsteps, and I know that Mr. Gonzalez and the rest of us who are out there had that opportunity to visit with our members of our community who were complaining about that, and I think that's one of the things that we try to do is, I think, first of all, we work on the water, because that's desperate, desperate need of our community. Next, we try to do, what do we do to protect their properties? And I think that by the safety of our police officers and the next is our property, drainage is a big issue. I think, Mr. Cruz, you mentioned something like 600,000, was it, did you have an estimation what the, for the drainage in Las Flores?
I have two different scenarios, two options, including the 600 was before the police station now. Now you have another, whatever, 10 acres that you've got to look at, because police, it's not going to stop at the police station.
Right.
There's other stuff that's going to be built there. So the option one and option two are the two that I have in the back, which is almost a million dollars.
And that would be for the impact of the police station, and then just the drainage on Las Brechas, I mean, on Flores?
Las Flores and taking it all the way down to, to be able to, if you're going to do this, you do it for the whole area.
Right.
Including the south of, you know, all that area across Dominique Park and all that area, open land that's in the...
Okay, and then the other is, I know that we have currently an application with the E-DAP for the first-time sewer connections of 105 homes, and very soon, the decision at the commission level, are we ready to come out to make a match once that gets funded? Is that correct? And we're anticipating...
We're hoping sometime in summer.
Around how much do you, do we are anticipating that we would need to fund our portion?
Well, right now, E-DAP is, they're admin, right now. You know, E-DAP is a path for any time. If there's not a cycle, like the work anymore, that there are U.P.s and all that, they could be funded again anytime, it could be usually fit to fit, definitely fit. So, whatever that, I think we finished the path which we should be, I think we had some trees, so by next summer, we should know.
And what do you think that that's going to come up to be? We looked at a 50-50, and it was, there's funding available.
I think there is, about 100,000.
Then we have, what I look at, a continuous road projects, because we're talking a big, about the bigger roads, we still have the residential, and I think you come up with an overall, last, I'm sorry, I didn't see the final that you have, what are we at now? Nine million dollars worth. And of course, it's broken down by priorities, which are the ones that are, would be phase one, phase two, as we continue working on them, so about nine million dollars worth, not including the ones that we're talking about.
Not including the three paths, which is one of the biggest, it comes with...
Right. And then, of course, I have as my final, the police department, I know there was an eight million dollar amount thrown in there, we don't, we don't know what it is. Eight million dollar, it just seems a bit overzillas, but, you know, we will definitely be something we would need to be looking at, but something that has been in the planning, and we've already engaged in a contract with an architect for that. So when I look at, as we look at the projects that we're looking at, and I'm hearing that if we do 4.8, you know, about four, maybe four million dollars that we can actually look at right now, all things being, you know, as they are now status quo, we could fund four million without impacting. If we put all of these row, all of these projects together and have to pick and choose, then, and only look at the roads, we would never be able to do these without, one, we're going to have to choose, and the other, if we were to choose more, we're going to have to start raising the taxes to be able to meet that. So what I like for us as a commission to consider is, you know, you talked about, okay, well, if you don't do the roads to the extent that I'm looking at, but if you consider the next option, the next option being what option A was, when County Commissioner Palacio brought to us, it would be 1.4 million for, and I believe that's Nollana, no, it was just Eldora and Sue Road, okay? And when you, when we talk about those, we can go back to that amount, when we look at the additional work that would be done versus just the overlay, that would include drainage, and it would include what else?
Drainage.
We'd have to reevaluate the drainage, Mayor.
Okay.
To include whatever drainage, and we'll reconstruct the roads, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But going to five lanes will address all drainage issues that are currently existing out there in Sue and Eldora.
And I appreciate that.
And of course, Cesar Chavez.
Yes, and that Cesar Chavez was not part of our, except for a small section, when we already, it's been done. So I think that, and those are just, the more obvious that we have been dealing with, that are the issues that face us, and I think we'd be remiss not to consider those as we're making a decision, because there's really is tremendous need, and when we look at, if the impact is going to be beyond the four million to do more projects, and it's going to affect our tax rate, I think we need to have an approach that's equitable, equitable to everybody in the community, because we're all going to pay for it. And so I think as we make a consideration of what we're going to look at, that we consider some of the items in drainage, I think is extremely important for Las Flores, South San Antonio, and the ones that I've mentioned, that I know I've gotten a lot more feedback from my community. And as we look to make that decision versus the five million on those roads, which are good projects, something anyone said was not, but we have to consider everything else that's in the demands for our community to make that decision, that we also take that in consideration, because if we do issue now debt, if you realize, we issued debt in seven, in 2007, we issued debt in 2010, the next time we get to go to the well, I don't know when that's going to be. It might be two years, you know, it might be five years, which means that some of these projects are going to, we're not going to have the means to meet those. And so, I like for us to, that's what I like to just bring to the open as we have these discussions of what, how much do we, debt do we get into, and which projects do we do, and is this the time to do it? And if we've got four million that we can work with, I'm really great with that. But as we start considering going above that, I think we'd need to be very conscientious of an equitable approach.
Mayor, two points, if I may.
Yes.
You know, there's already $30 million set aside for Sue and Eldora, and as you know, being on the MPO, if you don't act on that, that money gets eaten up by somebody else, whoever's ready, you know, we've seen a lot of money going to the west side, Precinct Three, they're working on projects a lot, Precinct Four is working on a lot of projects. We have $30 million available, and we're hoping, and we're planning on, and we're going to fight for those dollars for Cesar Chavez, that's another $15 million. You also have $10 million from the county, so you're looking at close to $50 million coming from both the MPO and the county. So I just would like that to be considered, you know, you have an opportunity to leverage money on, you know, an absolute, a huge amount. That's the most important point to all of this, and when you look at all the needs, I mean, a lot of the projects, I got to defend this with all the other cities that I represent too, right, Farm, County, Hidalgo, but everybody knows that the needs are here in San Juan, and that's why we're concentrating on these projects. That's with respect to the five priority projects, because I know that, I know the needs of San Juan, I was happy to see that south of the, south of Moore Road on San Antonio is County Road, so I'll go and I'll fight for every dollar that I can get to be able to work on that project too. If I can get clearance from our legal counsel that... If I can get clearance from our legal counsel that because we have County Road to the south, that we can work on a project with the city of San Juan, I will absolutely bring that to the table also. Any project that I can assist with, where we can partner, I'm going to be ready and willing to do that. You know, we have other projects we're working on. Anytime I can find a funding source, I'm going to bring it to the city of San Juan and see if they're ready and willing to partner with us. That's the whole point of this, you know, these priority projects is to leverage money.
And I guess, you know, for purposes of timing, I know, as I've said in the, at the MPO board, I know that by the time that we get to the right away acquisition design, you're looking between, definitely eighteen months on the environmental. And then acquisition of right away just depends how smoothly that goes, two years down the road.
Are these roads, I mean, to get them to one hundred percent completion, you're talking about four to five years. And that's why we're working on, that's why the Plan C option is a good option to get us to the fully constructed roads. I mean, you know, best case scenario is not to do the overlay, right? Because it's not going to last very long. But in this case, we'll get some, I guess, temporary support or temporary improvements there, and then we'll come back and do them the correct way, five lanes with sidewalks.
Right, and I guess I want our folks to understand that that money's not going to be moved. We're going to work on those roads and it may be an overlay for right now, depending what happens, but that money's not going to be pooled. We're going to work through those overlays so that hopefully by summer, they'll be able to drive through those roads without having to break their axles.
Yes, ma'am. If we get a commitment on those two roads, then we'll push forward with the overlay.
Oh, so you're saying that if we don't commit to them, you're not going to overlay?
No, let me finish my.
Okay.
If we get a commitment, we'll do the overlay. If we don't get a commitment, then we have to go back and do drainage work and come back with the cost of doing option A. And then if the city says, we're willing to pay for the difference between option C and option A, we move forward.
That's one, that would be about one point four.
But the difference is, we don't have plans for that. We have plans for option C. So, I mean, just all that, take all that into consideration.
And the option C is the overlay, right?
Correct. The option C is the cheapest version of it, which is what the money's been set aside for.
Gives immediate relief to our folks.
I think, you know, one of the biggest things here is that, and you know, in the last six years, we've heard from our community. And our community has been very clear about what the needs are. And we've slowly struggled to try and meet those demands and those needs. What I've seen though is, we haven't had a willing partner in quite some time to the tune that we have now. And one of the things that I really want to make sure that we all understand is that, you know, we're getting a significant partner on the road projects. We're talking about investing, you know, pennies on the dollar, which is an opportunity that we have not had, at least in the six years that I've been here. And I think that if we can take advantage of that partnership now, that'll, that'll only open up more and additional opportunities moving forward. As Commissioner has mentioned, he's already looking into potential partnerships on San Antonio. Additionally, when we look at the Public Safety Building, we also need to remember that we also have funds available through the asset forfeiture funds, which, which I'm also glad to announce that Chief González sent out a report, and it was a news report today, that because of the efforts of our police department, we were able to get eight hundred thousand dollars of drug money off the streets today, which will, which will then, not to the tune of eight hundred, but a portion of that will also be going into, into our asset forfeiture fund. And I see that as something that will continue because of the commitment that Chief has and the efforts of our police department. So when we talk about our police department, we're also not just talking about going that road alone. We have a partner in the police department and that asset forfeiture fund. So one of the things that we need to look at is, although our needs are many, our partners are many also. And wherever we can partner, we need to, we need to very, very aggressively open our arms and welcome that help in. Because if we don't, we're going to set a very dangerous precedent. As I mentioned, in the past, when we've accomplished projects, we've typically gone it alone. It hasn't been until just recently, when we started to work on, for example, our canal lowerings, where we started partnering with county and using our urban county funds to do those projects. But that also was done through other revenue aside from just the tax revenue. There also was additional revenue that we had received. And so we need to really start getting a little more aggressive in seeking partners and other opportunities. Because if we continue on this path, we're going to doom our residents to carry the burden of doing these projects. In that same note, when we talk about building roads that, and I will disagree with the mayor that Cesar Chavez was not a priority because I know for a fact that at least on five occasions, we have met with the city of Alamo on Cesar Chavez. And when we've met with them, we have always discussed extending Cesar Chavez all the way to Nollana. And Commissioner left out in his presentation that along with the city of San Juan partnering on the Cesar Chavez project, the city of Alamo will also be making a financial contribution to that project as well. And I think that the priority for Cesar Chavez has always been there. That's not something that has not been discussed here. We've discussed it not only from Carroll to Business Eighty-Three, but all the way to Nollana. And particularly because we expect that to be an area of economic development. And when we talk about economic development, again, we're talking about a partner and that's business through their sales tax. And what we need to do is really extend the opportunities to attract more business into the city so that we're sharing that burden of paying for all of these projects that are greatly needed in our community. We can't just expect our residents to shoulder that burden forever. We really need to look to partners. And I think that, you know, this is a great opportunity that the Precinct Two is bringing to us, particularly on these roads. And I think that particularly on Cesar Chavez, we're going to give ourselves an additional opportunity to bring in more business, which will also help us increase our revenue flow. And as we move forward, I also, one of the things that I had wanted to ask Ms. Revella is, one of the things that I didn't hear you say today is, is our rate of increase in ad valorem. I understand last year, we had a significant increase in our ad valorem valuation, which, which in addition meant an increase in collected revenue. And we're projected to have an additional growth, and I saw it here earlier and I was trying to find it, but I was not able to. But I understand that it's, it's in the range of about six point nine percent increase. Does that sound about accurate, Lee? It's in one of these sheets and I saw it, I just couldn't find it after. And so if we're talking about a six point nine percent increase, are we also taking that into account when we're looking at? Yeah, six point three nine. Our estimated growth is six point three nine percent. And are we also taking that into consideration when we're talking about, you know, what our debt capacity is? Obviously, if we hold steady on our costs, we're able to see a approximately four hundred thousand dollar savings. But if you add to that the six point three nine percent increase, are we not also talking about additional revenue there as well?
Commissioner, that's, that is correct. And I was remiss in not pointing to the footnote in red on our calculation here. It says preliminary as of March the thirty-first, subject to change at any time, and assumes current rates plus fifty basis points. The problem that we encounter when we undertake these types of projects is that we don't know on a going forward basis when we're going to sell. So whereas some of the other numbers that I had provided to you had a lower interest cost, these numbers are a little padded to account for time. We're living in very volatile times. We don't know what's going to happen to interest rates. So sometimes when we ask to do these things, we hope to err on the side of caution and hopefully that it goes below. But Commissioner, you bring up a good point in the sense that, no, we did not take into consideration projected growth in assessed valuation, which could have an impact, in other words, a penny would go a lot further, would go further as that number goes higher. Okay? Now, but I would say that all of these things, we do take into consideration as we get closer to the issuance of, or the probable issuance of the debt. And it would, it would, it's always a lot better to go and say, this is the number that it takes to achieve this, what we think today. Rather than say, well, we said that it was going to be this, but we really need this. So I'd rather couch it on the side of caution. And frankly, I'm not comfortable even with those numbers because I don't know what's going forward. But if we could, if the assumptions are true and correct, the only beneficiaries here are going to be the citizens of San Juan. And that's who we, you know, that's the bottom line.
Now, Ms. Revella, if you also just, for the benefit of everyone here, if we could talk a little bit about what occurred last year, I want to think, I want to say it was September, maybe it was August, when we had to have a conversation about the rollback. And the reason why we were having a conversation about the rollback was because our ad valorem valuation had increased so much that our revenue had actually increased by, if we had stayed at the same tax rate that we were, we were going to have an increase of something in the area of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional revenue.
The observation that I would have on something like that is that we work a little closer on the planning side when we start getting the preliminary values from the appraisal district as a board, as a staff, as a community. So that when we get our first preliminary values from Hidalgo County, Rolando Garza, the chief appraiser, they usually come in April. And then you get updates almost every month or sooner from, or more frequent than that, that we start planning for what our budget is, what our needs are, and where our assessed valuation is. These are some of the things that I have been discussing with, you know, with your staff on a going forward basis. But yes, that is a good point on a going forward basis to be able to plan more effectively for, and look at these calculations very carefully and see, you know, what has gone into them, you know, for verification. I'm not saying that they're erroneous. All I'm saying is, what has gone into them so that we can look at them and see if there's other things that can, that we can do to continue to be able to raise the necessary revenues for the improvements that are needed.
So at what point, if we were to proceed on agreeing to issue, for example, certificates of obligation, at what point would we have to entertain the actual issue of a tax increase?
Taxer increase would be at the time that you would set your tax rate during the summer. I think you approve your budget effective October the first. So that means that you would probably have so many days, I believe it's seventy-five days from the date of your certification, receiving your certified value from the Hidalgo County. Don't hold me to the days, I'm going by memory here, but whatever that date is from, based on the state statute.
We wouldn't have to make that decision until we set the tax rate, which we typically do that, you know, it has to go through multiple ratings.
But we would first have to sell the paper. And as we get closer and we go through the process, the definition would follow in terms of where we would be on the actual debt service associated with market rates, with rating, with things of that nature. We don't know what monetary policy is going to be during the summer. A lot of people say that the Fed is going to start raising, you know, rates. I don't know. I've heard it so many times, you know, in the past, that maybe this time is for real. I don't know. Some say the dollar's too strong that, you know, you know, you've heard all the explanations. So I'm not smart enough to figure out what's going to happen. All I'm saying is that as the process goes forward, if the board was, or the commission was so to authorize to go forward, we would monitor the situation and keep the city commissioner apprised of those, as how we, the progress and what it means to the city before we actually sold the paper.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, ma'am.
Aside from the fact that in a certificate of obligation, the commission makes, just takes it to a vote and implements the increase versus the bond issuance where the people themselves decide how much they would want to issue and how much they'd be willing to take on as increase in debt. What are the considerations to take in that? If we're going, if the effect of taking out a certificate of obligation beyond the four million that we've spoken, to be able to reach this and other projects, what is the effect of that versus the people deciding what they want to invest?
I'm not sure I follow the question.
We're going to raise taxes if we're going to go beyond the four million. That's what we established here. So if this project by itself is five point seven, we're going to raise taxes. We either do it through certificates of obligation where we decide to do it and the people have nothing to say about it because we make that decision, or the point where we tell the people, look, we're going to need an additional two million dollars. You're going to have to vote on that. Do you want us to take on that two million dollars? We stay at four. I mean, at what point do you decide that's the route? And what are the, what are the options? What are the benefits of? One, I think the people get a choice. You know, what are the things that are important to me? And we kind of throw it out for the rest of the community to make that decision as well. But as far as cost to us, I mean, what, what is the best scenario for the additional money above the four point one million? The approach?
I would object to the term that the people don't have a choice because I think the people have been very vocal about what it is that they need and want. I think we've heard it over the last six years. And if we don't know that yet, then I think we've got a hearing problem. I want to tell you I haven't because I've been told for the last six years exactly what it is that the people want.
Right, and I agree. I agree that it's those roads, Mayor Protemp. But there's other needs as well that I've spoken about that we also need to take into consideration.
Allow me to finish. And even through the certificate of obligation, for you to say that the people have no voice, I think is also inaccurate. Because I think Ms. Revella was very, you know, informative and being very clear that at every point, there's a checks and balance where the citizens have an opportunity to be heard and to have a choice and a vote.
Correct. Right now.
If they choose not to agree with whatever this commission decides, by petition signed by five percent of the eligible voters, they can force an election. Is that accurate, Ms. Revella?
Not necessarily force an election, but, I mean, block it.
I mean, it says right here, you can force an election. I use the language straight from here.
What I'm saying is that we would decide what the projects are. And we're talking about projects that we know we need. But when I'm looking at the amounts that we're considering at the five point seven, it doesn't take into account San Antonio. It's not taking into account the drainage issue for Las Flores. It's not taking into account Las Bretches. It's not taking into account the possibility of us being able to build a police station. And that's what I'm saying because I believe that we need to definitely have, take action. And that's why we met on the north roads and we need to do it. But we also need an opportunity for the rest of the items as well.
This commission has not, ma'am, could you please?
Go ahead. Just go ahead, go ahead and finish her. Go ahead and finish your comments. Go ahead.
You know, as you're allowing everyone to just kind of.
It's not everyone, sir. Go ahead.
I think that if you, if we, if this commission had moved forward on planning some of these projects, I think one of the reasons that we've faced the issue with the rollback issue is because there was no planning being done. And I think that at this time, there's been a considerable amount of planning put in to these particular roads because these were the most needed. I'm not saying that the other ones are not, and I'm not saying that we should not. I'm saying that before we start talking about raising taxes on those particular items, we should at the very least have gone through a planning stage on those, which we have not. Now, as I've mentioned, particularly on San Antonio and on the police station, we have other partners on that. So if we want to discuss that, those particular projects, then great. But we can't just start pulling things out of a hat here. We need to have a plan because if we don't plan, then you're dooming this community to carry the burden by itself on those projects. By taxing them. And I think that.
I don't want to tax them. That's why I'm asking. I don't want to tax them.
And I think that we are not doing our job if we're not being responsible. if we're not being responsive to what they're, what they are very clear on, what their needs are. And if you're saying that you need to go to an election to figure out what the priorities are, then I don't think that we're being receptive.
I'm asking, I, I wanna clarify something, sir. I didn't say do it.
I'm not done, ma'am.
No, but you interrupted me, uh, Mayor Protem.
I had the floor.
I'm asking him to consider what are the options of those two.
Interrupt while I was speaking, and again, you're interrupting me while I'm still talking, and I have the floor. I'm, what I'm trying to explain here is that you, even if we do go out to an election, we have to say on there what their options are.
Absolutely.
We can't just say, "Well, we'd like to go out for a bond, what is it that you want?" That's not the way that process works. And so at any rate, we would still be having to decide what those projects are.
That's correct.
So I don't understand what you're, when you say, "Well, we'll just let them decide what the projects are." Well, no, because when you put it out to a vote, you have to specify what the projects are.
Of course.
So then it's not accurate for you to say that you wanna put it out to a vote to see what projects they wanna do. That, that would not be an accurate statement, and you made that several times.
But they get a chance to look at the projects that people have spoken about. And I think, um, when we talked about, and he says that you want to raise, or you're asking for something to raise the taxes. My, my questions are, we need to go into this eyes wide open. I know that 4.1 million will not be taxing. So as we look at the proposals from the commissioner, I know that two roads can add up to 4 million and not be taxed. Now, the other thing that I've seen standing, uh, being at the MPO is, we do many, many projects throughout the west and in other areas through phases, Commissioner. You know, we fund the, the beginning stages, the right acquisition and the, and the design. When the, when the entity is ready for the next phase, they come back to the MPO for the funding for the next phase. So the, the thing is, okay, let's say we, let's say it passes and 5.7 million debt is issued, and we have to take it. We know, and you just stated, that at least 18, maybe two years, we're not really seeing any kind of digging of, of anything. So we actually borrow 5 million. We start paying, we, let me just finish my thought and I'll- Yes, sir, yes, sir. We start paying the debt as soon as we get it issued, then our obligation becomes annually. So we're gonna be paying fi- on, we're gonna be paying our debt of 5 million starting when we issue it within the year. We may not see any road broken or any ground broken until the third year. Do we go in for the, mhm?
That's what, that's why, you know, this is the reason why this is good, you know, that, that we talk. Let, let's break it down into fiscal years, okay? We're completing fiscal year 214, 215, that we're currently in, on September the 30th of this year. Okay? How much money and what kind of a commitment do, do you, Commissioner, need for fiscal year 15, 16?
Be able to take it all the way to, from, see, we, we, we've done a cash flow analysis of what we need year to year. I'll try to-
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, at what point, remember that under federal law, I've got to be able to commit and obligate this money, you know, uh, and have 85% of it spent within three years. So I, I, I've got to be careful.
That's perfect. Uh, I think we broke it down in three years. We have, we have it in three years, but I have it, the total amount of, that's needed, so. Oh, here it is, I'm sorry. San Juan, 2015, 650,000. Oh, and this is for Eldora Road. Uh, fiscal year 2016, a million, and fiscal year 2017, 700,000, for the total of 2.35. And we, I'm sure we have the same thing for Sioux Road. Sim- similar, 515, 850,000 in '16, and a million in '17.
So for 215, 216 is how much?
For two, for those two roads? Let me give you a-
Whatever the commitment is, the matchma- the matchma- the matching share that will be spent, um, in a reasonable amount of time, uh, in 15, if we issue, if we provide debt to, I mean, money's to you in 15, 16.
Uh, 1.6.
And in '16, '17?
850 and 1.35.
And in, uh, '17, '18?
Okay, no, you're confusing me. Let me, 15, 2015, because you're, you're, I mean, I, I have them as, I don't have them as 15, 16. 2015 is a million dollars.
So in 14, 15 is a million.
Right, and then in '16, it's 1.35. I'm sorry, I'm, that's far, okay.
1.6, I believe.
Maybe we can take a little break and-
Sure.
And work up the numbers, you know, without-
Yeah, and I do need to take a-
There we go.
We'll go ahead and recess, uh, at 7:54, and resume as soon as everyone clears this issue.